Good afternoon. Fairfield County Government, County Council Meeting, Monday, January 28th at 6:00 PM. First we have the approval of the agenda. Been motioned and seconded by Mr. Douglas. All in favor? Next we have invocation by Vice Chair Gohens.
Let us look to God. Lord God, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this time of coming together to discuss and to take care of the business of the county that involves all of our citizens, Lord. And we ask in the name of Jesus that you give us clear directions. And Father, when we even falter, Father, we ask that you would do the corrections where we can understand it and make a way for each and every one of us. We give you praise and we give you glory for allowing us to serve in this capacity. And we place all things in your hands, and we know as long as it's in your hands, not some things, but everything is going to be alright. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Gohens. Next we'll have the approval of the regular meeting and the inauguratorial meeting. We do both at the same, if that's okay with everyone?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Been properly moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? Any opposed? Approved seven zero. Next, we have no public presentations. Next we have public comment session. Ms. Locklear. Davis, I'm sorry, I gotta get used to that.
We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on board minutes.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. Just a comment on boards in general. I just wanted to know, now in my, well, let me preface this. In my experience of the particular board that I was on and still am on was under a lot of scrutiny and accountability. Quite frankly, although it seemed like a lot to some people, to me it wasn't enough. But I don't see that same type of framework, although there are difference with the other boards in our county. In other words, what are we doing to hold our county boards accountable for activities of the board that they're on? Are we letting them know that we're accountable? I mean, again, the board I was on, we knew that every minute of the day practically, it seemed like. But it's still really, quite frankly, as far as the council was concerned, it wasn't enough. And as you guys know, that accountability leads to productivity and a lot of good things. A lack of accountability leads to less than ideal results all too often. And the county itself has gone to accountability for its own employees. The employees, the feedback, from what I have heard, love it. The county is benefiting, the citizens are benefiting from that accountability. So, let's see what we can do to afford accountability and convey accountability to the boards of various boards throughout our county so that we can maximize productivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
That concludes segment one.
Now down to public hearing. We have two items for public hearing tonight. We'll open the first one, item A, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Palmetto Health and other related matters. We'll open this at 6:04. Ms. Davis, do we have anyone to speak?
We have one speaker, Mr. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. I just want to take this opportunity, and I think everybody knows what this is about, to again, remind everybody of the great job that the previous council, and I'm sure this one will continue it, in putting together a package along with Providence, along with the hospital board and the hospital administrative team, to ensure that we have the, quite frankly, the best possible medical care and continuation of the medical care that we can get with the resources that we have. And it was just a tremendous deal, and I don't want anybody to forget this, and of course, this is this last piece here, keeping rehab within the county. I mean, it, believe me, it took a lot of work to make this happen. And it's so beneficial and it fills such an important need. Not only a need for its residents, but a need for growth, a need for appearance outside. So, thank you, County Council, for continuing this and putting this last piece on for the time being, putting all the parts together and ensuring the continuation, and in fact, an improvement in medical care in this county at, and we've said this before, but I'm going to repeat it, at an approximately $650,000 annual savings over what it was. Well done, Council.
Thank you, Ms. Bright. We will close the public hearing for item A at 6:05. Next, item B, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, ordinance number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from B2 General Business District to RD1 Rural Residential District of 2.18 acres owned by Jerry Murphy Jr. This is a portion of tax map number 185-02-02-005-000, track A. Property is located at approximately 6,700 East Peach Road, located in Ridgeway, South Carolina. Ms. Davis, does we have anyone to speak for this? All right. Time in, it'll be, we'll open this public at 6:06. Ms. Davis, do we have anyone to speak?
We have one speaker, Mr. Randy Bright.
You gotta take advantage of this opportunity. Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. Like with all ordinances, the ordinances were originally put in place for a reason. Now, I understand the flexibility to adjust these ordinances, but I think with all ordinances, we need to know what the end game is with this ordinance change request. Remember, the ordinance was in place for a reason to begin with. So what's the reason why we're changing this ordinance? What's the end game? How will it benefit our community? How will it benefit us in, not only our community in the future, but right now? So, what's the end game? What's the benefit of this change? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright. We will close that public hearing at...
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I speak.
Yes, sir.
What is on this 2.18 acre? Is it any buildings on this land?
Mr. Morgan, can you advise? Mr. Klow, okay.
Nothing on it at all. No stores, anything?
Any other questions for Council? We'll close the public hearing at 6:08. On to ordinance resolutions and orders. First we have item A, third and final reading, ordinance number 713, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement to an economic development project located in Fairfield County. The execution and delivery of documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this ordinance and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
Seconded.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, if I could ask if the administrator could just give a brief update of this, please?
Yes, ma'am.
I will be brief, and I'm glad to, we will go into more detail in just a moment. We've got this under the administrator's report to update on this particular company. This company is M. Lilly. Typically, you don't announce really until all of these readings are done and finalized, but with this particular company, they were willing to go ahead and announce. They are M. Lilly, they manufacture mattresses, and they will be going in what was commonly known as the O-Mac Truck Building. The way economic development works is you have to compete against a number of other counties, number of other locations. In South Carolina, we have a fee in lieu of system which makes it where you can take the taxes, which are high in South Carolina on industrial, like 10 and 1/2 percent assessment, very high, but to make us competitive, the legislature had to put in a law called a fee in lieu of agreement, so you can charge fees as opposed to direct ad valorem taxes. It reduces their payment from a 10 and 1/2 percent assessment roughly down to a 6 percent. And then there's other things such as a special source revenue credit that you can put in place to again, even make yourself more competitive. And so, that's essentially the economic development game that you have to play. You have to be able to give them incentives to make your location more attractive than something in Georgia or something in North Carolina. So essentially, that's what this is, and that's what we've done. We've given them a credit on their taxes to reduce them to the special source revenue and the fee instead of the taxes. So that's what we're doing, we're putting in the legal paperwork to make that possible.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Any other questions? Would have been motioned and properly seconded. Any other further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed, seven zero. Next we'll have item B, third and final reading, ordinance number 715, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Palmetto Health and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Been moved and properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? Ms. Taylor, would you like to give us another just brief update for the public's record, please, sir?
Certainly. When council decided to get involved with the hospital, when it became clear that we weren't able to save the hospital, we wanted to try to save healthcare in the county in some way, fashion or form. We worked with Providence with the new emergency room. But we also knew that the rehab center that was there was kind of the bright shining star at the medical facility at the hospital. Everyone had good reports about it, so we wanted to try to find a way to save it also. But council directed me to purchase that building only if we could find someone to occupy, someone to provide rehab services. So what we did is we reached out to that community, talked to a number of different providers of rehab, and in the end, decided that Palmetto was probably the best fit for what we were looking for, and we have developed a lease with them. They will go into that existing rehab building, they will provide rehab services. We have had, again, just as with M. Lilly, we've had to put some incentives in place because that building, as it exists, needs upgrades done to it in order to make it usable for Palmetto's purposes. So, in the lease agreement, I think we have a total, we have it structured, where I think you have six months, if I'm not mistaken, kind of upfront of free lease, and then on the tail end, if they can make the business go and be successful, then they do get rewarded on the tail end also with another six months of free lease. And that is again geared toward helping them improve a building that the county owns, so we are getting value for that free lease that we're giving them because they're improving a county-owned property, and we're also using that to incentivize them to come in and provide services we need for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. It's been properly motioned and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? Approved seven zero. On to item C, second reading, ordinance number 716, an ordinance to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, ordinance number 599, to provide for the zoning reclassification from B2 General Business District to RD1 Rural Residential District of 2.18 acres owned by Jerry Murphy Jr. This is a portion of tax map number 185-02-02-005-000, track A. Property is located at approximately 6,700 East Peach Road, located in Ridgeway, South Carolina. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? That's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may please, since the question did come up, may I ask an explanation of maybe what the property's purpose is?
Well, this one I will defer to our planning and zoning director. It has been properly noted, it has gone to the planning commission of a recommendation to council for approval, but again, for the specific details, I will defer to Mr. Clausen.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Chairman. So this was a request that came in, and really it was something that was caught because the property owner split up the one larger parcel that you saw that is a portion of blah, 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 blah. They'd split that up into four back in July, and then they had plans then to take one of the tracks that they're rezoning now, and they're going to further subdivide it, and they want it to join a piece of property with their larger tract, right? You can't do that if they, if the two districts, zoning districts differ, right? So they had to go in and rezone that one portion to be RD1, which is what the neighboring parcel is. So the parent tract was all B2, and the three remaining pieces will remain B2, and that one fourth piece will become RD1, and then part of it would merge, which actually it's beneficial as well for the property owner, the future property owner, which is their daughter, I believe, and she wanted to put a mobile home on the one piece of the 2.18 acres. And then the other portion is going to go back with the parents, and I think they're going to build a little pool house or something to that extent. That, a mobile home is in keeping with the area, actually, to be honest, RD1 is in keeping with the comprehensive plan. I don't know how it got B2 in the first place, to be honest. But, so this is sort of correcting a wrong, if you will, and also allowing them to do what they want with the uses.
Now, RD1 is for mobile homes, houses, or residential, so it could be either or?
Yeah, RD1, it has a number of uses that are allowed, but yes, a standard designed mobile home would be allowed in RD1.
Any further questions? Motion been made and properly seconded. Do I have, do I have all in favor? Any opposed? Approved seven zero. Ordinance 716. Next, item D, resolution number 2019-02, a resolution identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Title 12, Title 12, Chapter 44 of the South Carolina Code, so as to allow investment expenditures incurred by a company known to the county as Project Lilly. It affiliates and related entities to quality, quality as expenditure eligible for a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement by Fairfield County. South Carolina providing for other related economic development incentives and/or matters related thereto. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved and properly seconded. It shouldn't be in a discussion, but I'm asked, is there any? I think Ms. Taylor might have covered it all, so. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried, seven zero. Next down to board and commission minutes, is just received as information from Fairfield County Disabilities and Special Needs and the Chamber of Commerce. Next, board and commission appointments, none. Old business, none. New business, the chair is appointing Mr. Clarence Gilbert for Providence Health Board of Trustees as his appointment. Now down to county administrator's report, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Council, just a few items tonight. We have some request of actions to move forward to council. They have been to finance committee and came forward with recommendations on both of these. The first, we have put out for qualifications, a request for qualifications for engineering firms to provide services to our airport. We had a contract previously with W.K. Dixon, that contract is now up, and so we did put it out. We had a response, I think, from eight different engineering firms that would like to provide services. In the end, the committee did end up picking Michael Baker to provide services. We are switching from W.K. Dixon to Michael Baker. Our airport director, I don't know if you want to add into that, but if council has any questions, that's who they have picked and are recommending is W.K., or Michael Baker.
Does anyone have any questions? We do, what I wanted, well, since there are no...
One of the reasons picking a engineer for this project is the fact that he can pick other people to do work, the people in Fairfield County, the people that can do the jobs and stuff that come up at the airport, he can hire them to do the work, if you do subcontract.
If I'm not mistaken, they still have to be FAA certified to do the work, so.
He would be, and he can do the subcontracting work for them.
Item A, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
It's been properly motioned, motioned and seconded. Those in favor? Any opposed? It's been approved, seven zero, to approve the request of action. Next down to item B, purchase of a Genie, request of action, purchase of a Genie Boom lift for building maintenance shop administration and finance committee recommends approval. Ms. Taylor, you want to go ahead and give one?
Yes, this is relatively simple and straightforward. We knew that our previous Genie Boom lift was needing replacing, so we did budget in this year's budget. We budgeted $60,000 for this item to be replaced. We've properly advertised and accepted bids. We received six bids, ranging from as high as $93,000 down to $59,000. Obviously, we are recommending the low bid of $59,485 by United Rentals.
What would happen with the old Genie Boom?
It would be put out for auction. Those kind of items, we send to state surplus typically, or we can auction them off locally, but typically procurement says we have to accept bids and we send to state surplus.
Okay.
$59 or $69?
$59, $59,485.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's been approved, seven zero, to approve the second request of action. Next, well, Ms. Taylor, go ahead, I'm sorry. I've been talking a lot, I guess.
You have good news in economic development, thank goodness this year to start the year off. Do you want Ty, Davenport Economic Development Director, to get up and talk a little bit about both of the mega site, to give an update on that, what's going on there and with M. Lilly. The mega site, I'm getting calls because activities occurring out there, people in the area are calling and saying, you know, I'm seeing somebody out here, what's going on? And so we just want to let people know that the state did give us $2 million. We are spending that $2 million now, and that involves engineers going out, looking at the site, evaluating it, doing surveys, and soon hopefully we will be putting infrastructure in the ground. But that process has started, and we just want to make people and council aware of that. Ty, if you would.
Thank you, Council, Ms. Taylor. Yeah, as like Ms. Taylor said, the engineering has started, we're, right now, the engineers are gathering information, data that they need to do various studies. For instance, you might have seen them out on the roads around the mega site, they're drilling holes just to find out what kind of bearing capacity the roads have, because they figure they're, we will be bringing in heavy equipment to do grading and that kind of thing, so we, we gotta know what, if the roads can handle it and if they have to be beefed up. They're also doing some surveys on where their water and sewer lines may or may not be extended, just to get ready for that. So really, they're just gathering data at this point that will be used in the design process. No pipe is being laid or no roads are being built until we get all this information together. That kind of covered the overview there. And then I also wanted to give you an idea of what the mega site is. So, we've done a website for the mega site. It's pretty, I think it's really good, and it'll give you an idea of what we're trying to do. And if I'd ask the deputy if he can turn out, just turn down the lights there, I don't know if you got the, on the other side, other side? Oh, you got them, okay.
Did the same team of lights do that?
They did, and they did an outstanding job. I think it's, you know, we had some input on some of it, but yeah, they were the, they kind of pulled it all together for us, really did, did well. Davis, go ahead and hit it there. That's just, that's just the video. You can go to the website, there's a bunch of data about Fairfield County, about the workforce, all kind of information that, you know, that's, would be important to somebody who's considering the county. That website was sent out to site selectors, corporate executives, magazine publishers, you know, anybody who would be an influencer or a decision maker in the economic development process. Really pretty amazing, I think, for, you know, for Fairfield County to have something like this out there working for us. Really is a nice, nice marketing piece. Move on to Project Lilly, which is a company called M. Lilly. They are, most everybody knows this, they've purchased the Mack Truck Facility. There, you've probably seen people out there working, they've cleaned up a lot of the outside. It really does look nice, done a good job on the outside of the building. They have hired, contracted with Gray Construction to do the renovations inside. That's about a $10 million outfit on the inside of the building. That'll take, you know, eight to 10 months to get where they can start part of the production process. So that's going on right now. Again, it's $450 million of investment, 250 jobs over the next five years. And of course, that's a facility, you notice how white that roof is? That roof has been replaced, that was a $3 million roof replacement, so that's going to last for a long time. That'll keep them dry for a while. This is the jobs and investment schedule. So in year one, 2018, they purchased the building sometime late November, and they are now doing the outfit, so that, you got $21 million of investment in year two, which is outfit, machinery and equipment, that kind of thing. And then they'll do their first round of hiring, 70 people, you can see what the average wage is. They'll hire a lot of, on the front end, they'll be hiring a lot of the higher paid folks, so that's why the wages higher for year, for 2019. And then you go into 2020 and so forth, and you can see that they're adding 70, 60, 50, 50, 20 jobs to total 250. And then you can also see the investment schedule as well. So, we're really excited about that, 250 jobs is a great lick for any community, and it's a huge one for ours, so real, very thankful for that. Great way to start the year off. And just a little bit about the company, they're Chinese-owned, they make mattresses, they make the memory foam mattresses, not the kind that, you know, has a box springs, these are all kind of one-piece foam. These are all kind of one-piece foam, uh, foam products. It's the new thing, uh, that you see in the market now. This is a facility in China, just thought I'd throw that in, just to give you an idea of how big they are. They've got two other plants, one in, um, Spain and the other one in Eastern Europe. I can't remember the name of the town there. Okay. It's the, in, an inside shot of the plant, it's clean, looks clean, safe, um, you know, I think it'll be a good place to work. Go ahead. And this is another, another shot of part of the process. Essentially, they're a foam manufacturer and they cut it up and glue it together and different, give you different firmnesses and different, different feelings. This distribution portion of the plant. And, and this is us actually walking through it with, with company people walking through the Mack truck facility and it's, uh, it's dark and needs a lot of work on the inside, but, uh, so this is going to be a great repurposing for this property. Uh, again, a great thing for the county and the 250 people that are going to end up working there. Uh, not this isn't very clear, but this is just the, uh, just a, kind of an activity report, shows the, um, activity we've had over the last, uh, 12 months. It's been pretty steady, but averaging about 11, 12 visits a quarter. Um, and I, you know, that's, again, it's hard to see, but, um, activity is, is, you know, like I said, fairly steady and a little bit better this year than last year. Davis? So there you go. Um, any questions for council or questions for you, Ms. Um?
When are we going to be able to disseminate any contact information for new hires for Gray, uh, either Gray Construction or, uh, M. Lilly? Do you have any estimated timeframe on that?
I talked to Gray Construction last week and they, um, you know, most of the folks that they hire will be subcontractors. So they'll, they'll go out and hire the electrical firm or the plumbing firm or whatever. So, um, uh, direct, direct unemployment with Gray probably, you know, would, but I got, they, I imagine they could, uh, refer. I do have that, the contact person at Gray, the project manager, and I can, I can get that to you and you can give to anybody that you, you know, that's asking.
Are you still going to have the office set up down below Dr. Gaddy's office downstairs?
We won't know until they're coming in, um, the Chinese New Year is kind of going on now. It ends, I think, February 6th, and then they go on a, they're going to be on a two-week kind of vacation. So we expect, well, one week vacation. So we expect them in February 15th to February 25th, somewhere in that timeframe, and we'll know a little bit more about their office plans. It's difficult to communicate in China, you know, their, uh, uh, security system on our, on our emails kicks half their emails out because it's, you know, a threat of some sort. And, uh, um, and the phone calls don't work too well. So, but, but when we get face to face, they will have somebody here on the ground, I think by the end, by the end of February.
I will add, we have updated the office, it's ready to go in case they do need it. We've painted it and got it cleaned and ready to go for them.
All right. Any further questions, Ms. Davenport?
Thank you.
There is no clerk to council's report. Next is the second public comment session. Ms. Davis?
We have four who wish to speak. First, Mr. Randy Sisk with an update.
Good afternoon, council. Mr. Ty cannot, can't come near his, but what I do have is an update on the school that we have brought to Fairfield County. We're in the old Gordon Odyssey School Building. Currently, we have six people that we're helping with their business plans. These are some interesting business plans. Uh, we have one individual, uh, is a business incubator. This individual is outrunning his own self. He's in the process of acquiring yet a second business. Uh, Mr. Taylor, Ty, uh, they all visited the facility. I believe you were somewhat pleased. Um, we have the importance of a business incubator in our agreement. Uh, this gentleman, uh, that's in there now, he will be going out and meeting Ty later on as he goes to the end of the life cycle of a business incubator, uh, and at his growth rate now, he will be talking to Ty because all of our agreements require that you stay in Fairfield County. That's the whole concept, building Fairfield. Uh, we have a second business incubator, it's due to move in this week. Uh, she's finished, uh, her business plan, funding. Uh, things are looking very well. The third phase of what we do, plan to do, uh, we are bringing on some short-term courses. Uh, two courses that we're bringing up first are your CDL compliance, excuse me, CDL Class A/B. Class A is typically your tractor trailers. However, in ours, it will be dump trucks and trailers. By definition, it is a Class A, but we'll be doing B as well, and that's your bus. Signed a memorandum of understanding with Midlands Tech this morning to work together to help each other. So, uh, I encourage you to come out to the old Gordon Odyssey, meet with us and see if we can help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Jackie Workman, speaking on vision.
I haven't started yet, Mr. Anderson. Oh, no, start back at three. I haven't started talking. Okay, thank you. Good evening, Chairman Robertson, Vice Chairwoman Goings, and council members. I would like to apologize to Councilmember Pauline for not recognizing him on his victory at the last meeting, so congratulations to you, it's just an oversight on my part. As council plan, organize, and strategize on innovative ways in order to move Fairfield County forward, I ask that county council be unified, stand side by side in making your decisions that will benefit the citizens in each prospective districts. It's 2019, a year of new beginnings with a new council, therefore, let's produce a corresponding action by supporting the teachers' village that will attract new teachers and new businesses. B, names to be placed on the proposed monument in Jenkinsville, Booker T. Martin, entrepreneur, Henry Yarborough, entrepreneur, and George, Zenobia Dixon, educator and true leader of justice, Maxwell Whitting, Camp Liberty, and Reverend Thomas Feaster, the first firefighter. Economic development, I'm glad to hear Ty say that, and I'm glad to see that it's not minimum wage, so thank you for that, uh, report. I hope it come to be, be fruitful. Economic development, whereas one can earn a living wage, not only a minimum wage. South Carolina wage for working marginalized people is only $7.50. How many Fairfield County employees are still making $7.50 an hour? And how many of you and your family members that have a job are making $7.50 an hour? Please raise your hand so I can see where's nobody. And D, the penny sales tax. If the citizens vote for the penny tax, we want it to be a well-thought-out plan at implementation. In closing, tell the taxpayers three to five specific goals that you all are going to aim for that will uplift Fairfield County for 2019, and you can do that in your planning board meeting, because I'm going to be there. So, um, if you could do that, I'm going to say, well done. Amen? Amen?
Thank you, Ms. Workman.
Next, Ms. Shirley Green, speaking on history and humanity.
Shirley Green, District Two, Ridgeway. Thank you, Mr. Davenport. That was a nice video on the mega site and, uh, M. Lilly Corporation. We are certainly very happy and proud to have new businesses come into Fairfield County. Little bit about humanity. What connects you to humanity? Fond memories, a teacher, a preacher, a parent, spouse, a terrible situation that you want to prevent from happening again? What makes people train? Like nurses, doctors, teachers, firemen and women, military servants, and emergency workers who work to serve, protect, and care for others risking their own lives in many instances? A love of humanity. Now, there are many things that we can do when it comes to humanity. As we work to care for those who care for us, there are different kinds of things that we may do. Right now, workforce housing seems to be a solution to entice and incentivize teachers, first responders, and their families to locate here in Fairfield County. Something old is new again, even here in Fairfield County. Like nationwide, workforce housing was very popular in the 40s throughout the 90s. The area known as Mill Village where we sit now was built in 1920s. It was designed as workforce housing for Uniroil Goodrich Tire Manufacturing Company. A company where mill workers could buy the necessities of life in, in their own little convenience store type place or, or, um, company store without leaving town was a highlight of the community. The teacher at Mount Zion was likely housing for a headmaster, housing for visitors, and our workforce housing for teachers who came to town to teach. Economic benefits of housing is a fact. Twelve houses run by the Fairfield County Disabilities and Special Needs Board in Winsbar with 48 people plus staff generates $100,000 a year in grocery purchases alone. If we extrapolate just the potential local grocery purchases for just 30 houses, an estimated 110 people could generate over $200,000 in Fairfield County in grocery purchases alone, not counting the other food and amenities purchased in the community. This is an exciting time for Fairfield County. Economic development, enterprise zone, incentives, and other things to help our county grow will enhance humanit, humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on it's cold outside.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgway, Fairfield County. It's cold outside is a very obvious statement, and just as obvious, as we move forward, we've got to plan. Ms. Workman touched upon this a, a bit in, in her discussions. But we've got a lot of good things going and headed in front of us. How are we going to capitalize on them? How are we going to take advantage of these 250 workers that we're going to get and all this investment, for example, uh, with M. Lilly? By the way, M. Lilly, um, makes a, a higher-end mattress, several different brands, and they're very well reviewed and they're on trend, uh, with, with products made from, uh, bamboo and aloe vera in part. So, on trend for the upper crust like sitting behind our council chambers. So, anyway, bright future there. Speaking of bright future, we, we have a very bright one, but we've got to take advantage through good planning. And that starts with a planning retreat, what we've done in the past, a session like at local Midlands Tech, where we lay out a plan for our future. And among those things that we need to, to look at, we talked about the infrastructure plan for water and sewer with the penny sales tax. Let's get going on that. Every year costs us $2 million we delay. We also need to be looking forward to another infrastructure that, there's not a lot we can do immediately, but we can start thinking about it, making plans, making contact, and that's all important infrastructure of the internet. We need as many people as possible connected to the internet. It's very expensive right now, but in the future, it may not be. In the future, we may have government, uh, help from the state and from the federal government, much like, uh, it was pointed out we did in the 1930s with bringing electricity to the South and the rest of the nation. So why not form a, uh, at least a planning committee and, and explore the possibilities with IT experts of internet structure within our county? Vital, let's connect our county to the world. And it might start with internet pockets, you know, we have libraries and right now there are internet pockets, and then could branch out from there. And certainly, we'd want to, uh, bring in True Vista to get their expertise and their input and their cooperation in this manner. It's not going to happen overnight, but it'll never happen unless we get going. So let's think about getting a committee together. These are some of the things we should be thinking about during this planning retreat, retreat. There's, you can look back on, I believe it was a couple of years ago, it was a planning retreat, retreat with format and ideas and all, even a, a master plan that we never used. But it was certainly something to look at to get you guys going. Remember, it won't happen unless we get going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bright.
That concludes segment two.
Now we're down to county council time. Would any council member like to be recognized? It's Goons, especially our Goons.
Thank you, Mr. Tier. All right. Good evening. Um, just want to touch bases on a few things. Um, first, I want to thank, um, Councilwoman Pauline for bringing to my attention at the EMS station in Jenkinsville, the, the parking area, the asphalt is beginning to break and kind of deteriorate. I wasn't surprised because of the amount of rain that we've been having. That happens sometimes. It happens on main roads, it happens in parking areas that are used excessively, because once the soil underneath the asphalt begins to, uh, absorb a lot of water, it shifts, it begins to shift. Whatever's on top of it will move, but I want to thank Mr. Anderson, he, we let him know about it. It's being worked on and want to ask if there's anything going on in that area that you're aware of. I appreciate you contact, contact any of us. I appreciate you doing that, contact myself. And, uh, I can guarantee you, if it gets to Mr. Anderson, Mrs. Taylor, any of them, um, it's going to get taken care of and, uh, I will stay on top of it. So I want to thank you.
Passing that information on, and if anybody asks about it, it is being taken care of. Uh, the second day, want to touch base, though, and I, before the mega site, that, uh, it's just changed the face of Fairfield County, it's moving us forward, as Mr. Randy Bright says it is, and as Ms. Green says, this, all this is a part of helping to move Fairfield County forward. Also, I think there's quite a misunderstanding on the, um...
I'm going to speak on you. On the monument in Jenkinsville, um, it's really not a monument being made up, a monument, uh, being purchased of any sort. There's a space of property there, and my thought was to bring the community together, that we do a community memorial, which would be the area would be refurbished and it would be set up so that people in the community could actually purchase a brick, and, uh, the best idea I can give you is what's in front of our new emergency room. When you see the layout of the bricks there with names of different people, that is the idea. It's not going to be a monument with engraving of anybody's name in particular. When you purchase a brick, you can put anybody's name you want on it. You can put your name, your church name, business name, whatever, and we're going to, um, ask that, um, we get this into the budget, to have it just fixed up, a really nice area, just fixed up to kind of upgrade the community. But I saw it as building our community brick by brick, and that was the backdrop of it. It wasn't anything to do with, uh, anybody personal or whatever. It's just an idea of when we look back on it, when we tell our, our young people in the community, this is what we need to do to keep our community together. It's like building a house, you have to start a foundation, and you build it brick by brick together. And hopefully, that'll give them encouragement to continue to work together. Um, that area, West Side, and all of Fairfield County had good families and they worked together, and we've all come through some hard roads, some hard times, we haven't always been where we are, but we did it together. And that was just my idea of putting a monument that one day you can look back on and say, this is how they made it. This is how we were able to make it because of what they did. But other than that, that's it. It's just that simple. There wasn't anything other than that. So I wanted to thank you for that, and I, hopefully, we can press forward, get people involved in it from anywhere. If you want to put a brick down, somebody, and just fix it up in time to time, it's like a roadside stop. You can stop by and just take a look at it. When you're at the lake on that side fishing, just walk up the road, just take a look at it, check the names out, just like we do when we go into the emergency room. So that's it. Thank you so much. much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Goons. Ms. Douglas.
Chair. In order for us to sell the megasite and other industry for Fairfield County, we're going to have to have another sewer plant. I have an idea to raise a little money. Along with the one cent sales tax, we could probably build a sewer plant. And next meeting, I'll reveal what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Any other councilman? Mr. Bell?
Again, as we look at the work that's done with the mega site, I'll tell you one, that's a huge deal for Fairfield County. It is absolutely a huge deal. And again, I want to thank everyone for all the work they've done in trying to bring that to, so it happened. But as we talk about the teacher village, I want everyone to know that I can't hide away till we be able to get the teacher village here at the school. But there's another thing is that there are a lot of people have been asking me, is when are we going to do the work in Ridgway and District 1 for the recreation facility? There was no, I know a lot of people was told that there was money already allocated, but there was no money allocated for the recreation facility in District 1. Now, we're going to work with council and the county administrator to try to be able to do that. But as of right now, there were no money allocated to District 1 for the recreation center. Mr. Taylor, you want to speak to that, if you would?
Yes, it is an item that we would have to budget. Some of the other recreation centers were built with money out of the bond. I think a previous deal had been made between several of the districts to build a center. They gave up their money in, I think, the Ridgway area to build a, I think it ended up at the Mitford area. But anyway, that was part of the bond deal that was done, I think, two councils ago, in fact. But right now, we would have to go into our budget, next year's budget cycle, if council chose putting money in that budget to build a new facility in Ridgway. The first thing we would have to do again, though, is we do have to find us a site for it.
Right. Okay, again, thank you for all your work in trying to, so we can try to make this happen for District 1.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Any other councilmen want to be recognized? Ms. Gilbert?
Yes, Chair. I'd like to say thank you for selecting me to be trustee of the Providence Health on the Providence Health Board. I look forward to representing Fairfield County. As far as I understand, I've got a lot of work on my hands.
Yes, sir, you do.
We've got some issues that need to be taken care of and that they need to be aware of. So thank you again for selecting me, and I look forward to...
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. Any other councilman want to be recognized?
I'll just go ahead and, I guess you're trying to take advantage before budget come up, huh? But just a few things I would like to touch on as well, as far as recreation in Ridgway. You know, if everything looks right, I think it'll be a good thing. We do have a lot on the plate, as you're aware of. Maybe that's one thing you could bring up during budget time, so. Also, I've been asked, like Ty, in reference to M. Lily, I would definitely like to get the information out there to the public to keep the buzz going, so to say, because a lot of people are looking for work either in construction or down at the old Mack plant, as they say. And I am a big, as Mr. Douglas says, we are behind in this county. We're 20, 30 years behind because we assumed we was going to get all this money from VC summer. So we didn't invest in things. But now is the time, I think, I had you maybe look into penny sales tax. I'm not sure exactly where you are with that method or looking into it. Maybe you can elaborate or give us a little more insight?
Our attorney and I have talked, and we are, and I don't know if you want to give us a timeline. We've talked about a timeline that we wanted to present to council and what the process is, so everyone clearly understood what we were facing in getting that done. It's a legal process. Okay, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Council, we do have a draft that we've been working on. I actually have it here on my tablet. Still need a little bit more input that I'm going to work with Mr. Taylor on with regards to capital project sales tax, that one percent, one cent tax. That, we need to get certain identifying projects in place that the council identifies as being, you know, the expenditure for those types of funds. We're also working on some other projects, both with accommodations and hospitality taxes as well. I have drafts of those with me as well. Again, they're working drafts. We should have something available for council's review here shortly. Obviously, there will require some referendums and some votes. So there is a timeline and a process, but we have to go through and get the necessary legal documents prepared first, so then we can bring that before council. So we do have some pretty good working drafts on it, and some final spitting polish needs to be put on there, and then we can present those to council.
Thank you. Definitely, we need it. I agree with you, Mr. Douglas. We definitely going to need the sewer plant and the penny sales tax to help us strictly designate it for water and sewage. You know, we're in motion of putting things together with the joint water system. So we're on the right path. We just have to continue. And we're going to run into bumps, but this is something new for us, and I think it's going to be great for us as well. Just be ready for change is all I'm saying. That's what I'll say. Yes, ma'am?
Just one more thing. Would like to say, found out today that they are going to continue refurbishing 215. They've already come out with, started doing the markings and everything. There was a section that was done a while back. So they are back out, and they're going to go down to Richmond County Bridge. And I'm thinking, I think we set up to about 34. It's going to take some time. But they are planning, they are working on that now, the process of refurbishing 215 on the west side.
Thank you, Ms. Goons. Any other councilman want to be recognized? Well, next, we'll be going into executive session for legal matter, update on new members, on pending litigation matters, also for receipt of legal advice pertaining to personnel matters. Subject to executive session, council may or may not take action on matters discussed in executive session. Do I have a motion?
Yeah.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Council going to executive session. All in favor? We in executive session?